Yep. I turned my phone down. I have people text me, like Heather texts me during the meeting and asks questions.
She asks you to do what?
Heather asks me questions via text message during the meeting.
This meeting?
A lot of meetings. So if you see me texting that's...
Tell her to join the meeting. What do you mean texting? Excuse me. Yeah?
Sure.
Sure.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, Lee. All set. It's, uh, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we all, uh, rise for a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to apply from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our December 16th Select Board meeting. Lee Dakin is on Zoom with us in a virtual world. One of our board members, Heather, is feeling under the weather, so she won't be joining us today. Uh, the first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes of our December 2nd, 2020 Select Board meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Second.
Lee Goodson's the motion and, uh, Jeff Holden's the second. Any discussion, corrections, changes to those minutes?
I have none.
I have none.
Lee, okay with the minute, the minutes?
I have none. Yeah. Thank you.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Are you opposed? That's all set. Next item is citizens' comments. There was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is, an item that is not on the agenda. Now would be the time to do so.
Um, well, I'm just...
Leslie? Just give us, give him your name when you, when you talk, Leslie.
Okay, I'm Leslie Thorson, and I'm just here following up on, uh, adding the police policies and procedures to the, uh, Select Board agenda.
Mm-hmm. Uh, it was included in our packet. Everybody have, had the chance to, hopefully to read them and go over them and stuff. And, uh, at the end of the meeting, we're gonna have future agenda items.
Okay.
And what we will do is probably schedule it for a time, uh, next year after the budget's done and have a, a warned meeting regarding that issue to see where we would like to go with it. But, uh, that's where it stands as for now.
Okay. So when is the budget gonna be approved?
Well, usually, uh, December, January, it, we work a lot on the budget and everything going on, so if everything goes smooth, it, it, we're probably looking at February, March, somewhere after that, maybe after town meeting that we would...
When are we getting them back from Trevor Whipple?
I couldn't hear...
Sorry, what was that, Lee?
I, I can't. I did not hear the question.
Oh, uh, Leslie asked when we expected to get, uh, the review back from Trevor Whipple.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And he had told me it would be, uh, a few weeks. So he's had them for probably two weeks now. So, um, I can certainly check back in. Um, he's reviewing what is they, what we have. And he's also going to be sending down proposals for the new pieces of the new building, the holding cell, those types of things. Um, you know, kind of what the state standard is on those for us to start reviewing as well. So he had said a few weeks. I didn't have it, an end date.
I did not think there was a state standard on the holding cell, actually.
I think, I don't, may, I may be using the wrong term. Whatever is common practice for procedures is what they're sending.
There's no, that I'm aware of any law or any type of, uh...
There may not be a law, but I think there is a common practice because we're not the only one who has a holding cell in the state of Vermont, so...
So are we, is the public gonna be able to review these or...
That is a board decision, Leslie. That is not my decision.
Well, we plan on having a discussion on where the board would like to go with this issue in general and talk about, uh, all the issues surrounding it and the policies. It seems like there's a lot that has to be, uh, brought out and figured out because even the state doesn't seem like they really know exactly what's going on with this. It's a changing thing. But when it's, when it's on the agenda, the public will be welcome to offer their comments and, and join us in the discussion. And at that time, hopefully, we'll be able to figure out what direction the board and the town would like to go regarding, uh, a lot of the things that you stated in your, in your letter there.
Right. Because the municipalities are not governed by the state. Like, our policies and procedures for Chester are not by the state. It's by our town. So I think that the townspeople should have input and some oversight. I mean, it is a state law to have an oversight, citizen oversight for, uh, state police, for the police. It's in the Constitution and, uh...
Well, and, and like I said, this is a discussion that we'd like to have on a warned agenda item about all the issues regarding this in general. I'm not sure of the specifics about state laws, not-state laws, policy, not-policy, procedures and everything else. So I figure at the, uh, at the meeting where we warrant it and we could discuss it in depth, we should be able to at least come up with the right questions and take it from there, see where we wanna go as a town.
Hi.
Go ahead, Lee.
It's also, it's also my, um, understanding that we have put a process in place, or had a process in place for updating our policy manual, doing that kind of work, and that takes time to do. And Julie, I believe, is in the process of putting together the facts and putting together the, the suggestions that, that people have had and what the state, there is statute, and there are statutes, but they're also ongoing to be discussed and to be, uh, updated.
Yes. Thank you, Lee.
Well, okay, that's fine, but the statutes that I understand are just general, not municipal statutes. So if we wanted to have input into our own town policies, we should have that. That's not written by the state. They don't write our policies.
And, and that's something we could discuss when it's agenda item, whether, what route we wanna go and how we wanna address these issues.
That's right.
Okay, I'm just gonna keep pushing on this.
That's fine.
Because it's obviously a national concern.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns had reviewed the Chester police policies and procedures, which, with many concerns in it, that I don't believe were addressed in 2013, you know? So now that we have this in front of us, instead of kicking it down the road, I'd like to see, I know we have to wait for the holiday and all that, but it's not gonna be three years from now. You know, we make a decision on this. I mean, it's our town.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else I would like to address the board in our virtual world? Go ahead, Sean.
Uh, yeah, I'm just, I'm getting very, very, very volume on this and it's difficult to hear, uh, what everyone's saying.
Uh, how's, how's it now on my voice on this end?
Better.
It, it might have been the microphone where Leslie was speaking, it was kind of facing in the wrong direction and she had her mask on and stuff, so it, that might have, uh, affected the sound quality. Julie, can you hear Ju, can you hear Julie?
Can you hear me, Sean?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
All right. If you have an issue, just let us know. We'll, we'll try to make sure you could hear what's going on. Anybody else? Uh, next item is old business. Julie, can you take us through our old business?
I can. Um, so in follow-up to the last meeting, um, I had a conversation with, uh, Kevin Raisik about the additional design work, uh, for the town garage. In talking it through, we decided it probably is just better to put it off and put it on hold. That, uh, cost was not for complete design. That was really the engineer and basic stuff that the architect needed to do at the beginning, um, was that cost.
Wow.
Um, so, and, and, you know, I, I have research to do to find out, knowing that, that that's not the only architect or design piece to be done, that there would be more, it sounds like a fair amount more to come, um, and we wouldn't be building it in the next, we can't add much to the capital until 24 or 25 anyways. So we'll do the research first, come back to it. It's not gonna end up costing us that much more, Kevin didn't think, if we did it later. Um, so we just decided to put it on a back burner for now.
Okay.
Uh, it'll resurface later on. Um, public safety move, building is moving along. Things are going, uh, rather quickly now. Uh, probably will slow down a little bit after snow tonight, but, um, uh, the, the project is only, um, about a week behind schedule. Um, a lot of that had to do early on with waiting for the concrete, uh, guys to finish up previous jobs. So they were happy. I, I've been hearing things, seeing things on social media saying the project is weeks and weeks behind. It's not behind schedule. It, it's, it's pretty much on schedule, so I think it's important for people to, um, to know that. Um, we are, at this time, currently our contingency is sitting at about 90,000, uh, which is good. Um, and at this time, I wrote this, they were anticipating a base layer of paving for a portion of the parking lot. That is now down.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, yep. And that just makes it easier to move around the site, which is the reason they do that. And then, uh, framing, the framing piece of the building they're anticipating will take place in about three weeks.
What, what part of the framing? Cause they, they've got quite a bit of framing done now.
They, I think they're talking about like siding and, and, and some of that type of stuff is what he, they, they were saying framing and siding. And they've gotta get a lot of that in before they start pouring the floors, cause the floors in this building are concrete floors, are dyed concrete floors. Um, so a fair amount of that shell has to be on, um, and I think, I think that maybe is what they're referring to, Jeff.
Yeah, they have to bring it up to temperature.
Correct.
It's gotta be warm in there.
Correct. And I believe that when they say the framing, I think that's what they're referring to.
Yeah. And I was telling Arnie that, uh, they did the pressure test on the water main today and it came back perfect.
Perfect.
The, the sewer line and the, the grease order, uh, grease and oil separator tank has been tested.
Perfect.
All that stuff is done. The only thing they gotta do now is, uh, chlorinate that, the water line and get two good, uh, coliform tests back, and that's all good.
Good. Perfect.
Well, thanks for stopping by every once in a while there, just to take a look around.
Um, Yosemite Firehouse, the work, uh, has been completed at Yosemite Firehouse. That work was the, replacing that header on the sliding door and getting the building, uh, to a point of stabilized so that it doesn't keep leaning, uh, towards the river. So that piece is done. Um, you can see if you're coming from here, heading over the, you know, towards the stone village, the bottom half has been painted, where they needed to do a bunch of new boards after they did the work, but, um, so that piece is finally done.
That building is getting there little by little.
It's getting there little by little. Little by little. Yep. And then the Jeffrey barn, uh, we heard, I heard from the insurance company, um, last week. There, um, are some of the concerns growing with them over the condition of the barn, um, and its stability. They are no longer willing to insure the barn. What they are doing is providing coverage of $50,000, which is basically debris removal, um, for if the barn were to collapse. Um, we were instructed by loss prevention to make sure we put up signs all over the building. Those have now been done. The guys did them yesterday, um, just stating no entrance, no trespass. Um, so those are up, two on each side of the barn. Um, but at some point in the near future, we're gonna need to have a discussion, um, about the future of that barn. Because now that the insurance company is making this statement, if somebody were to get hurt in there, we're not gonna be covered.
We, we did have, uh, discussions in the past, I think, uh, back, back, back some time of trying to locate a deconstruction company that would be interested in the timbers or some of the, some of the materials that are in that barn. I know it's not a real old barn because they're not hand-hewn, but they still are a lot of old, I guess, valuable, uh, in certain ways.
There's a lot of old valuable timbers in there. They're eight-by-twelves and they're hand-cut and they all cut, you know, all, they were all pegged, all the framework is pegged together, so I'm sure somebody would...
So maybe when, in a future discussion, we could revisit that area because, I mean, if that's the, the preference of the board when it comes down to it, but it seems like that, that building is to the point where...
It would take some significant money to restore it, certainly.
Yeah.
Well, a couple of years ago, I did some research. We're having the same discussion. I did some research. And there's a company or two in New York that specializes in taking down old barns.
Okay.
Um, it'd be a Google search to figure that out, but worth looking into.
Yep. Okay. All right. So I'll put it on an agenda item, maybe after the budget.
Sure.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, recreation, the Frisbee Golf, uh, tour, that, uh, tournament league, um, has asked to come back, uh, to Chester for next year. So they are actually, it has been confirmed, they're coming the first weekend in May, which is Mother's Day weekend, um, 8th and 9th, I believe, um, for another tournament here.
Nice.
Which is great.
They were excited about their first year here.
They were.
They, they liked the chorus, they liked the town, they liked the, uh, the people that were hosting it and that ran it. And they're, uh, they're really excited to come back.
Well, and it'll be a nice, uh, event to have, uh, you know, at the end of stick season, um, before summer really gets ramped up. So that'll be a nice little bridge, maybe for some of the businesses.
Yeah, it's great that that's working out.
Yep. And then for marketing, um, I forwarded to you guys, and I think I sent it, sent it to Sean Chu. Uh, we were featured in, uh, Redfin, um, as one of the top hottest, uh, 10 top, one of the top 10 hottest neighborhoods. And it was kind of interesting because number one was, uh, Lake Tahoe and number two was Chester, Vermont, so it kinda...
And we're number two?
Quite a contrast there, but, uh, it was a really great article. Um, I hope you guys had a chance to read it. It was very cool, um, spoke very well of the town and it was a nice little bonus for us. And that's all I have.
That's, that's 10.
Julie, did I miss something? Where would I read it?
I forwarded you, I forwarded the link to you guys in an email earlier today.
Oh, oh, today.
Yes. Yep. That's okay. It was earlier today. There's just a link to the, to the article.
Thank you.
Yes.
And that's, uh, it was their list of top 10 across the whole country.
Right. Right.
Yeah, to be number two. I, I don't know exactly what that means, but...
I, I don't either.
I think it's just a recognition and for our benefit, it's free marketing and free advertising, so...
Exactly. When you do a Google search for Chester, Vermont, and, and things like this pop up, positive things that, that, you know, spotlight what the town is and has and stuff, that, that can only be a plus.
Yep.
Nice. Anybody else, uh, does anybody have any old business that they, uh, would like to discuss? Comment on? Anything? All right. Next item is, uh, the review of our 2021 general fund, our combined budget to date and the grant budget. Julie, I guess you could take us through this one.
Sorry, I have a question. I got a document called 2020 General Fund Budget. Is that the correct one?
December 11?
Yeah.
2020, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Just wanna make sure it's on the right page.
That's it. Um...
I guess we can go page by page.
That's entirely up to you. Yep, yep.
I mean, the first, uh, the first page are the, it, it's the income. Uh, taxes, licenses, permits and fees. General government, public safety, police department and fire department. Any questions or concerns on it? Any big changes? Anything?
Nothing major from what you have seen before, when you looked at each department broken down.
And this is, this is the 2020 actual for, uh, three quarters.
Right. Remember, this is third quarter actual, but it is, this does show you the 2020 budget comparison.
So it gives us a pretty good idea where we're headed.
Yeah. Yep.
The one thing in the police department, we, uh, almost always overestimate our court fees.
Yes. And I did drop that from the 2020 budget, um, just because there is likely going to be a decrease. But there will, we are hoping to increase core. So the increase of core, we're hoping will bring, will generate some more court fees. Right. But I did, I wasn't comfortable with the 34. I did drop it 4,000, just cause I don't believe we'll hit 34.
Well, that, we haven't been able to go to court for tickets. We've been doing it via telephone.
Exactly. And eventually, at some point, that's gonna all catch up.
Right.
Hopefully, that'll be in 2021.
And I, well, I still see about another half a year of...
I think we do.
You know, before they're...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think so too.
So maybe the state will reimburse us for our loss.
And we haven't written anywhere near as many tickets as we would normally.
Well...
Yep.
Any questions or concerns on, uh, the first page? The second page is, uh, ambulance service, communication, public works, highway, solid waste, health and welfare and recreation incomes. Questions or concerns? And that, the...
And a missing number there is the highway surplus or deficit. Obviously, won't be known until the fourth quarter is done.
When, when diesel gasoline, the income is down, but the expense is down.
The expense is down as well.
Cause we're not, we're not buying it.
Correct. Correct. Those offsets.
Plus, the, the price, as you know...
The price has dropped.
The price is down on all fossil fuels.
Significantly, yeah.
Well, I mean, they just bought gas today and it's like, it's below $2 again.
In Chester?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yep.
Usually Chester's about five or 10 cents higher than Springfield, it seems, or Bello's Walls for that matter.
So I did, yes. I, we dropped the expense, therefore we also dropped the revenue. Yep.
Are we, uh, when we have, like, I think we've had this discussion before with, uh, the Andover fees. Are they gonna stay at that amount, or did we ever discuss having a slight increase every year?
No. I think, um, I did have a conversation with Chris Plum, who was the chair of the SLU board over there. Um, and him and I were planning to get together, uh, early spring and revisit the way we assess those fees. Um, because part of our conversation was, you know, Chester's carrying a fair amount of capital, um, one of those pieces being the new truck. And I've gotta look back up and try to find, I know that a lot of it was figured per capita, but how we came to the numbers that we did, I, I, I just wasn't a part of that. So how we figured those numbers and is there a better way to look at it? Are we, you know, are, are we doing it a, a good, fair way? Are we including capital in that number? I don't know. I remember that being a discussion years ago. So i- it's something that him and I both have on our radar to look at, um, early, early part of the year. Um, but I think we're too late to hit this year's budget, cause they're working on, I mean, they're getting ready to set theirs too, I think it'll be. So one of the things we're looking to work at. This, I, this, that piece, and the other thing that is on my list to look at in 2021 is the, um, transfer station fees to Springfield. That large bill that we pay to them.
Oh.
Um, as well as having to pay for the service as well, you know, the user fees. So, um, I wanna revisit that with them when they get their new town manager in place.
Because there was some discussion on that, because some towns don't have to pay that fee.
Correct.
But we do.
Correct. So there's some research to be done and, but they need to get their new person in place and, um, there, so...
All right. Thanks, Julie.
Yep.
And the next page over. Parks and cemeteries, other income. Any questions?
Some of these individual camps, um, when you get your final budget, if there is nothing that has been budgeted for 19 or 20 and we don't need it, those lines are going away in the final version. So you won't have as many blank lines. A lot of those are gonna get moved. And Matt has consolidated in revenue and expense, has consolidated some of these camps into, so there's not so many.
You can see the notes.
Yeah.
Gymnastics, dance and add them together.
Yes, yes. Yep.
We really don't have to see, I guess, every 200 bucks or 40 bucks or whatever is spent.
Exactly. And it makes it a pain when people pay and the girls have to run into the register, "What is this? Is this dance? Is this gymnastics?" You know, it just gets confusing.
All right. So we'll go on to the expenses, uh, on the bottom of the page. It's the Select Board, and the next page, Town Manager, and then Administration and Listers. Any questions or concerns? There's a lot of notes on the Administration side, which really helps to understand what's going on with it.
I hope so.
When you have those there.
Yeah, I hope so.
Explaining to how many workers, what's going on, the increase, where it could be removed or not removed. I don't see anything that jumps out. The insurance is always a big one. That changes depending on, uh, who's taking it or who's not and how it works.
Yep. But we are down an employee there, which is the main reason that that one is dropped.
Any questions or concerns on page four? I thought the listers... Okay, all right, no. Never mind. It's planning and zoning. Nope.
Okay.
I'm looking at the wrong, uh, department and saying, "How come that went down?" I thought we just hired it, but it's under the planning and zoning part. The next page is page five. Taxes, planning and zoning, insurance, and the police department. No big changes. Pretty much straightforward. Any questions or concerns on that page? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next page. And it's the fi, the last part of the police expense and into the fire department.
Again, these two lines are, do not yet have their capital transfer. You'll see that for your next meeting, now that I've figured out the capital plan.
I do have a question on, and I'd be remiss if I didn't bring this up because it's pretty obvious. Fire department salaries in 2019 were 22,000, and 2021 is supposed to be 82,000. That's quadrupled.
That's gotta be a number. They, they...
That 21 don't sound right.
That 21 doesn't sound right, Jeff. That, uh, there's no way those, that those...
Well, even in 2020, it's still 40, only 41.
Because that's only through the third quarter.
Through three quarters.
But, but even there on that third quarter, Jeff, because they get paid at the end of the year, but still accumulates, I, I believe that that is not including all of the third quarter.
Okay.
Um, but that, that 2019 actual number can't be right. I will double-check that.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it was just...
That's a good catch. Nope, I didn't even catch that.
It does seem a little light.
Absolutely. Something's wrong there.
Something's not right.
Oh, you know what? You know what it is? This is 2019 actual through the third quarter. So in 2019, their major payout
That's right.
was in December.
They didn't accrue it like we do now.
Right.
So at the, the last quarter was the big jump all of a sudden.
When you're looking at those actuals, those are not for the whole year. You're comparing the same period of time. So third quarter 19, third quarter 20.
Okay.
And in 19, they expense, they always wanted it right before Christmas. And we changed that in 20 so that you guys could have a better understanding of where that payroll was at. That is why, Jeff.
So they still get their big check near Christmas, but we know exactly what it's gonna be by the time it shows up by the quarter.
Yep. So we can better monitor that they're not going over.
It just seemed, that was just a big, big jump, so...
Absolutely. No, that's just be, because we paid payroll differently for them in 19 versus 20. What happened? Continue working. Yep.
It's all fixed, Amy? Well, you got two computers in front of you there. Come on.
I guess we probably need to reboot that.
Got it. Any questions on page six? Any other questions? Yep. A couple of big openings on this one with the capital plan also.
Yes. Capital and police both have their capital transfers will be in there.
Are those gonna be one number or is, they're gonna be broke down?
The numbers, what I have done, um, so I have re, I have reworked the capital plan. It's really not a capital plan. It's really a bond, a capital and bond debt payment plan. But, um, so the way I have spaced it, uh, separated it out is every department that has purchased something through the bond or the capital will have it broken out. The principal and interest will be broken out to their department. So what you'll see is in 2016, um, that first bond we did actually had... So what you'll see is in twenty sixteen, um, that first bond we did actually had, uh, the stuff from the pool. So that's now broken out, that's going to rec. It had the cemetery mower. That's going to go to cemetery. So everything will be broken down on that plan. I have it broken out. It's all color-coded, what those expenses are, and there will be transfers from each of the departments into that, in, into the capital plan.
Okay.
So it'll be in, almost every department will have one, except for admin, I think.
Now that you brought that out, I, I just, I never thought it was right before, previous, previously, that, uh, if we put up a bond or vote for the, the public to, you know, vote for things, I didn't think it was right that it'd be a piece of fire department equipment, highway, or whatever, all in one lump sum. I think that should be broke up.
Yeah. It just gives a better picture of what each department is actually costing the taxpayer.
Right.
It just paints a better picture. And the numbers are the same at the end of the day.
Not going to pay them or whatever. But I think it just needs to be clear which department is benefiting or using the money.
Sure. Yep, yep, yep. So you'll, you'll see that in the next version of the budget. I have, I, I'm finally balanced. So all of that will be, um, into your next budget, all those numbers will be in.
Well, it's, it's good that we have a, a starting number. So that's going to help. Because that, that was the big part. If you're going to try to balance anything, if you don't have a starting number.
Yep, I was having issues balancing.
It's kind of tough to make it balanced.
Balancing my starting.
And it turns out the number is relatively close.
Yep.
To where it should be.
Yep.
Which is going to make it a little easier going forward. But we do have some years coming up where the contribution to that debt service, basically, is what it is. It's going to get up there.
Going to increase prior.
To twenty twenty-three, I think, is the worst year, and then it slowly.
Twenty-three is actually the worst.
And that's assuming we don't make any more additions to it.
And, and I'm not a financial type person. I'm a lot simpler than that, but I, I never understood why you would in- increase that. I mean, if you buy a car or something, your payments are the same right from the get-go out through. I don't understand why two, three years down the road. I mean, I'm sure there's a financial reason, but I'm not getting it.
Well, it's, we're using it more like a credit card, it seems.
Well, I think, but I think what happened over time is there was a, there was a set contribution to the capital plan. I mean, when the capital plan was established, it was to get rid of the spikes in the budget. So, you know, the budget would come along, and then all of a sudden, oh, we got to buy a dump truck, and you'd spike the, the budget would spike, and you'd add three hundred thousand, and the next year, nothing. And then the following year, you'd spike to two hundred thousand. So the capital plan leveled that out. And in a capital plan, you're building capital. You know, you're building the money to meet your needs. But I think the needs, the needs exceeded.
The contribution.
The contribution. And, um.
Yeah, I, I get it. I just, uh, I'm just, uh.
Yep. No, I know, and it's, and it's, you know, I look at debt, and I'm like, oh, I don't want debt. You know, we do everything we can to make sure we don't have debt at home. But, um, in this type of setting, in a government setting, um, debt is not a bad thing. I mean, you, obviously, we have to be careful how much debt, because we have to repay the debt. But Ron keeps pounding into my head, you know? Because otherwise, there's no way to buy a fire truck. There's no way to buy a dump truck. There's no way to buy a backup.
Oh, yeah.
Unless you have a large pool of money to start with, and then, you know, contribute to it over time. And we're just not there.
It'd basically be your own bank.
Right.
Most, most entities can't do that.
Can't do that, unless you start with a large influx of money, right.
I mean, it's a tool we need.
It is a tool we need. And the bond program is a, it's a, you know, the bond program is not a bad thing. I mean, the bond program is a good program. I mean, it wa- it was, we were able to take advantage of some really low interest rates. We still can. We just have to, you know, make sure that we're using them, and not, not just as a, oh, free money, we can just go buy what we want.
Well, we're using it wisely.
Yep. And you think about what we've done in the past ten years. Um, I mean, look at the projects that have been accomplished in this town in the past ten years are enormous. And, you know, there comes a time, and they're all needed. They were all needed projects. There was not, I, I personally don't think that, for the most part, I don't think that there was frivolous nonsense spending. There's a few things that certainly could have been purchased for less, maybe, you know, in hindsight. But the public safety building we need. The dump trucks, there, there are reasons why we do those, the way that we do them. You know, we can tweak some of that, you know, but it, it's equipment that all needs to be purchased, and things that need to be done.
I get that.
We've bitten off a lot, you know, we just, now we got to catch up.
I get that sometimes you got to spend money in order to save money. You just got to be a little.
But we're on hold for, we're, we're going to have to be on hold for a little bit, um, and tighten the belt, uh, you know, for a few years.
Yeah, we still don't, we still don't know what, how we're going to come out of this situation. I'm actually surprised how well most of the businesses are doing in town during this situation, so.
Yep.
Thankful.
Yep.
Hopefully, that'll be over soon.
And, yeah.
Hopefully. I think we're heading in the right direction. Any other questions on, uh, page seven?
On page seven, I just wanted to point out that under communications, the self, yep, the self. Sorry, go ahead. The cellphone line. So switching to FirstNet, typically, what you're going to see is our annual bill will be ten thousand five hundred, going forward after twenty-one. But we were able to take advantage of, so, so first of all, the bill is down five thousand dollars. But second of all, it's down, um, about twelve this year, twelve or thirteen this year, um, because, um, no, I'm sorry, it's down seven thousand this year, because we were able to take care, uh, advantage of some credits.
These are one-time credits for switching?
Kind of a one-time credit thing, correct, correct, for switching things over. So, and the guys who have had their phones transferred over, we're still waiting on a couple of the new phones to come in. Transferred, very slick. It was, it was seamless, definitely. So there's some good savings there. But that was an unknown, I think, the last time you looked at that budget.
That's always a good thing, because sometimes when you switch carriers or you switch services, you end up with a whole bunch of new problems.
Right, yep.
And the fact that it went smooth, uh, is encouraging, for sure.
Yes, yep, yep.
Julie, I see dispatching is, uh, proposed at twenty-two oh thirty-nine.
Yep.
So just an update on where we stand relative to the dispatch service?
So, uh, the, the state is, legislature is looking at a fair amount of that again, but after talking to Tom and some research that he did for us, the state is not allowed to pass on to the municipalities the burden of paying for the dispatching fees. So that expense has gone away. It maybe has temporarily gone away, because I think they're taking it back up during this next session, and figuring out how to pay for that. But for the foreseeable future, we are, we will continue to be dispatched through the state police without an, any additional expense to us.
So we're paying roughly fifty-five hundred dollars a month? I mean, a quarter?
A quarter, correct. Yep, yep.
Well, I think what happened, I, at least part of it, is that the, some of the grants that we got from the federal government for the police. That might be why they were supposed to, uh, kind of absorb this dispatching thing.
They may be. I don't know. Tom forwarded me, uh, the bill that passed, and, uh, it specifically said in there that you cannot pass that, you cannot pass that onto, onto the property tax, is what they said. You know, the expense of that cannot be put onto the property tax.
If somebody didn't read it, I guess, when they gave us the information, it sure sounded like it.
I think there was a cross. I think there was a crossover and stuff. I think they were working on this, and then something changed in that bill, and I, I think that's what the issue ultimately was. Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, the information gets a little cloudy sometimes until they finally sign it, when you look at all the different parts of it.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions on, uh, page seven? I like that last line, "Street sweeping, trees, and hammer rocks." Uh, page eight continues on with the highway totals, solid waste, health and welfare, and, uh, the rec program starts. And that's another one with the, uh, the highway department with the capital plan.
Yep.
Not in there yet. The numbers will be soon.
Correct. And you're going to see in highway, at the end of the day, you will likely see highway up, that budget up. That'll be one of the few that's up. Primarily, um, because there is money in here, I'm just trying to find the line. There's money in here for, you know, fourteen thousand has been put in for installing the gravel pit. That's the roads, the culvert, what needs to be done to get that pit going when we have the permit. So you've got fourteen thousand in for that. Kirby's Bridge Line is up. The cost of bridge material, um, is, has really skyrocketed. So, you know, there's a few lines for him out of his control that are up this year.
Any other questions on, uh, page eight? That's that number on solid waste that you're going to be speaking to Springfield about, their thirty, their thirty-six spot?
Yeah, we paid the thirty-five.
Thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah, we paid thirty-five for them, but yet our users then have to turn around and pay to use it. So we just need to have that conversation. Yep.
All right. Anything else on page eight? Go over to nine, the end of the rec programs, parks and cemeteries, and the library.
Again, rec programs, you're going to see a major difference there, because all of the payroll stuff moved to the actual, um, rec facilities department. Just moved to a different department.
It's always parks and cemeteries that, that rarely changes.
Parks and cemeteries rarely changes, correct.
And the library, we had that discussion last week.
Yep.
With that, uh, slight increase to help with, uh, the benefit offering.
Yes.
Any other, any questions, comments, concerns on page nine? Going over to ten, town hall, revitalization.
The one change I did make to town hall that's different from when you first saw this budget is repairs and maintenance. I added a couple thousand dollars to that, because after police moves over to the new building, there is going to be some, a little bit of reconfiguring of that space. The guys feel we can do the work internally, it's nothing major. But, um, where the, the, the plan right now is that my office will go, we're actually going to come full circle. My office will go back to where Susan's office used to be years ago, uh, which is where the officers are. Sil will go into where Rick is. That back, those two back rooms are just going to become overflow filing in a storage place, because we're always looking for more storage in a controlled environment. And what is now the listers and zoning, listers will go back to my office. Zoning will go to the middle office between my office and the front office. And then where listers and zoning are now will go back to a small conference room.
So we'll have our meetings there?
Yep.
You might be able to hear, aren't you?
Yeah. Meetings will be able to be downstairs, and then we can have multiple meetings in a night. There's not such a conflict, or there can be an event up here, and, you know, in the future. So we'll be back downstairs.
That, that, that space was the perfect space.
It really was.
Because it hel- it, it usually held enough people. Uh, you can hear people.
Yep.
It was, uh, you know.
So, um, there'll be a little bit of, um, work that'll need to be done. The guys had put in a fake, I don't know if it's a fake wall. They put in, I think it is, they put in a wall, um, to make.
Closet.
To make a closet. So that wall will come back out. So there's some of that kind of stuff. So I did add two thousand. Rick and the guy thought that was enough.
Make that transition.
Of course, we're going to have to hope COVID is over, because we won't be able to sit that close together.
Having our meetings outside. Down on the, on the top of Butternut Hill, maybe, or something.
There you go.
Any questions or concerns on page ten?
Revitalization, I do want to point something else out, and this is, this is preliminary. This may be something that, depending on the end numbers, you may want to reconsider. The historic facility maintenance line, we have the repairs to the academy ceiling, and the match for the roof, ten thousand match for the roof. But we also put a little bit of money in there to, uh, paint, start some painting at Yosemite after and if I get the grant for the windows over there.
Windows for Yosemite?
Yeah, there's another grant coming up, um, that has a minimal match that we plan to apply for. Again, we tried it before, we didn't get it. But, um, that will start with the window repair. And if that, if that ends up being approved, the next step would be painting. Again, it, it's, it's a goal, but depending on where the budget lands, that's potential money that could come out if we needed to. And this also includes ten thousand for marketing efforts, again, a number that can, you know, be played with.
Placeholder for now, until we see how it all shakes out at the end of the year.
Shakes out at the end, absolutely, absolutely.
So is there anything, when you're doing the historic facility, is anything in there to start to try to get that second bathroom in working order, so that hopefully we'll be able to use all of those in the future?
Um, I did not plan that for this year, although it could probably, um, go in under miscellaneous maintenance. Uh, there's extra money in there. My plan for this year was to do the ceiling and the roof, uh, and get that done, and then start on interior redesign. But if you guys want to add money for that, we can look at that, too. That's.
Sure.
Well, just curious, is there any money toward the, you know, the booths and the septic pumping? So that's already in there, but. Great, thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you're right, Lee. Some, you, some, it would be nice some year not to spend two or three thousand to have tanks pumped, and have that money to use for, uh, refurbishing things in the academy building.
And I think there's a fair amount that needs to be done in there, but for, I think you would want the general public in there.
Yeah, we have to come up with a plan.
Right, and that, that is on.
Discussion on it.
That's on my twenty twenty goals.
You have to return this question.
Correct.
Yeah, we kind of know, we want to head in that direction, and we're getting there little by little.
Yep. And that is on my, that is on my radar for twenty twenty-one, to just start thinking of a, of a plan, and start having those conversations with the Historical Society, and, um, you know, trying to figure that piece out. At least start the conversations.
Is the hidden bathroom open to the public? That's in the Historical Society, the one on the right?
That, that building is not open to the public at all, because of that ceiling. And somebody, I don't, at this time, I, it would be really hard to get somebody in that building.
I'm glad to hear that.
There, there's a lot of stuff there, you know? Yeah.
I, I think this coming year will help a lot. Once that roof is repaired and that plaster is repaired, then we can start thinking a little bit more on the long term, and, you know, all the discussions that we've had about future use and, and making things like that available.
Yes.
So it'll help this year, once that, uh, those two big items are taken care of.
Yep.
On the first page, I see emergency services building. Most of these, I guess, are going to be guesses. Did they get back to you about what they thought that he?
I have not heard yet. I did when I had a, a com- a phone call with Kevin Raisik yesterday. Asked him if we're getting any closer to that number. So I'm hoping I'll have it. I keep putting pressure on.
They have it, I just.
They've got it. I just don't, I don't really know what the issue is in getting it. And we have another meeting, um, a building meeting on Monday. I, I do with them, um, so I will ask again. And I did finally get the, um, specs for the propane tanks. So I can now send that to some companies and try to get a competitive bid, maybe get a better price.
So is it burying two one-thousand gallon tanks, or is it one big tank?
It's, it is four small, it's four tanks.
Four tanks?
It is four tanks, what they have, what they have specked out.
Are they a thousand gallon each?
Um, yes.
Wow.
Yep. And we do have one, uh, oh, I shouldn't say that, because I'm going out to bed. I won't say what the cost is that I have so far. That would be unfair. But it's a high number, so enough that we would want to go out to bed. So I'll be doing, getting that done this week.
Does that building, Lee, have a generator system it's going to have? It is.
Has to.
Propane.
And it has to have the tanks dedicated for just their generator.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's the issue is you can have, uh, one tank or two tanks, however they're going to plumb together just for the gen set, because I'm guessing it's going to be a forty, fifty kilowatt generator, does that sound about right? Forty, forty-five, fifty?
Forty, yeah, forty-five.
Yeah.
It's a big one.
Yeah.
It is.
They sip a lot of fuel.
Got its own concrete pad.
Yeah, when they're running, but when they're not running, you've got two tanks sitting there.
Sitting there full, yeah.
Hanging out, waiting for their twenty years to expire so you can put two new ones in.
Yeah, we're just saving the, saving the propane for a cloudy day, right?
Yeah, speaking of generator though, because there will be, uh, you'll have to have service contract for somebody to maintain those.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I don't know if it's something we can put in with the, the one we have here in the wastewater right now, because they have to do the one down the plant and the one at the pump stations.
Mm-hmm.
Would make sense to keep
Yeah.
in-house like that for whoever's doing it, get a better deal.
How often do they have to do that, Jeff? Is that something I need to budget for twenty-one?
Yeah.
Because it'll go, it'll go in halfway through twenty-one.
No, every year, so.
Okay, so twenty-two, okay, all right.
It's got to be some kind of a guarantee with all this new stuff that we, we don't have to address it for at least a year, I would.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, but I'll make a note, I gotta add that in twenty-two.
I, I have my office eyes on my computer, but I'm having a really hard time hearing people sitting around the table, except for Julie.
I leaned back in my chair.
Yep.
And when I spoke last, I was back here and sat right in front of the microphone, I'm sorry. Is that better?
That's much better, thank you. If he's in the back of his chair, he can.
Oh, yeah.
I'm watching him now. It's just tough to have this thing right in my face like that, but I'll get used to it. Any other questions on page ten? And the last page. Voted articles, that's, that'll be determined as we get closer to town meeting. Other government expenditures, the county tax.
I don't have that yet from them, um, I would be anticipate that I would be getting that soon. Um, if I don't have it, then we'll just budget what it was for twenty. Usually they send something, that's a breakdown of their budget, and I, I don't have it yet. So, and it's almost impossible to get ahold of those people because they're not.
They're not there.
They're not there. Um, so
So maybe we don't have to pay.
The failsafe will be, yeah, wouldn't that be nice? The failsafe will be, we'll just budget, we'll, we'll carry it a flat line. Um, but I was just kind of holding out to the end to see if we got a number.
All right. Any questions or comments or concerns on any part of the budget?
Appreciate the comments, the notes.
Good.
Go ahead, Lee. Very, very helpful.
Good.
I would like to say one more time, for the worksheets are really helpful, that we had the preliminary worksheets that she had, and then to have this. And again, as Lee just mentioned, having the, the notes on the side, I, I'm very appreciative of that. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I plan to keep those in the budget for when it goes out to, uh, into the report, town report, because I think that'll help the taxpayers understand. Yep.
I mean, it's a, it's a nice detailed document that tells you where all the money's coming. There is nothing ambiguous or gray about it, here it is, these are the numbers and these are where it's heading.
Yes.
All right, if there's not, uh, not anything else, we'll head on to, uh, the next item on the agenda, which is a discussion regarding the waiver for the petition requirement to run for an, uh, an office, a town office.
Correct.
And I guess it is up to the select board to decide how we want to address this, whether we want to leave it the way it is, with signatures and the, and what's been going on and over the years, or do we want to change it and go to?
And that would only be for twenty-one. It's only allowed for this one year.
And go to an Australian ballot?
Oh, no, that, that's something different.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mixing the.
Oh, this is just to run for the, uh?
This is just to run for office and this, your decision tonight would be to, um, potentially, it's up to you, to waive the requirement for petitions to be signed.
Basically, that's it.
Correct.
I was combining the two because I know we're going to be having the discussion on that.
They will still have to sign a consent, uh, that which is their, you know, uh, certification that they're intend to be on the ballot, um, that still has to take place.
Now that would take place at the town hall, right?
Correct, they still have to do that by the certain deadline, yes. Yep.
So, so based on the note here in your manager memo, it sounds like a wet signature's required?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can't do electronic signatures, the, the temporary bill that they passed did not allow for that.
That was a question.
We got a decision, yeah, we called the LCT and got a decision on that and.
I'm a little concerned about it myself because I, if you, if you want to do it, you can, it's twenty-five signatures. I think anybody can get that. Um, I just think it's too easy for anybody to come in here and put in for whatever, and that's, I'll, I'll go with whatever the consensus is, but I just think, um, it can be done, even in light of, if, I mean, you have contact with people, as good many people during the day that are, you know, you can, uh, get your signatures, but.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm in agreement with Jeff, I'm not seeing what the benefit is uh, to the town or to the offices, offices that would be filled at this point. And I guess that's the other question I have is exactly what would this pertain to? Anybody running for any of the town offices?
Correct.
Nope.
I, I, I don't think with that requirement dropped, we're going to get a whole bunch of people that are all of a sudden going to decide to run for office. I would hope that if a person was going to run for office, he was going to do it whether he had to get signatures or not, and the fact that you don't have to get signatures is tipping point to make you run for office, it's like, really? I mean, it's kind of like.
Yeah, see, I'm looking at it the totally opposite way.
And everybody's just going to jump in?
Well, it's just like, if you're really dedicated, you want to be part of it, you'll find the twenty-five to thirty signatures. And, you know, that's my viewpoint. You know, whether it's a hardship on people or whatever, I don't know, but I think, you know, to this point, we run into people all the time that, you know, we socially distance and ask somebody, here, sign this, I'll leave it there and a step back, you sign it, whatever. I, I don't know, it just, it seems like it's not necessary in Chester.
Okay.
Right, and, and I do know some people that wanted certain jobs, one, I won't say which one, but that, uh, that this would be an opportunity for them to just come in and sign a paper and get on the ballot or whatever, but how many people do we want on the ballot? So. I just think if you want to do it, then you can put in the effort.
Now, we have to come up with a, an answer tonight on which way we want to go with this.
Yeah, we'll need to, we'll need to know, yeah, tonight, because you don't meet again until January and people will be starting to get their, um,
Signature, I mean, they're available now, right? I mean.
They'll be available soon, Debbie usually does those at the very end of December, so.
Usually it's towards the end of December, people start taking them out and stuff.
Yeah, so she just needs a decision on that.
I mean, the only, uh, reason was for, for health reasons, I mean, for the COVID thing, it wasn't for trying to make it easier or
Yeah.
uh, not having to go through the process and stuff. So, I mean, that's, that's my only concern. But that being said, was, uh, does this require a motion?
Yes, yes, you will need a motion, I mean.
Consensus is, everybody's going to go with the consensus, but we don't have a consensus.
Yes, I do, we do need a motion, there has to be a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we don't change.
I'll second it.
Continue using the requirements that we've had in place for decades.
So Lee Gustafson's the motion to just keep things the way they are, and Jeff Holden, second that. Uh, is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's three yeses.
Great.
Actually, oh, you don't vote, or?
Uh, I vote sometimes. It's a yes on me too, it's unanimous on the four here.
I said, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I heard you, Lee. So we're just going to keep it the same and, uh, you know, you practice your social distancing, put down the, the pad and paper and walk away and hopefully somebody will sign it and they take it back and you tell them to keep the pen? Put it out with your name on it.
Actually, you know, they have these neat little pen-sized spray, disinfectant bottles, you can carry around and disinfect your pen.
I, you know, I don't want to, you know, start making a little comedy about it because it, it has affected some people. We've been lucky in Chester. We've been lucky in Vermont and it, it's a lot different in a lot of parts of the country.
Absolutely.
So, so we kind of have the luxury of.
We're fortunate.
We've been lucky especially with all of the outsiders coming in here for, you know, obviously our income, we need it, you know, the, how many of them?
It could be a whole different story here. A big change in, really quick, but it doesn't seem like it's going to be that way, though the, though the numbers have been pretty steady, pretty high for, for the last two, three, four weeks, there hasn't been a crazy spike up, but, uh, there's a lot more people that are ended up in the ICU units and there's a lot more people that are dying. So, I mean, it's, it's real. All right, so we're all set with that. Uh, next item on the agenda is to increase the town credit card limit, and this requires a resolution that we have to make or a, a motion?
You just need to, um, if you agree, you need to make a motion authorizing Debbie, um, to sign the business card resolution form. And I want to be clear so that people out there can understand, um, I did have, um, a citizen ask me about this, like, why are we just all of a sudden increasing credit card limits? And I don't want people to be concerned about what we're doing. Um, so, just so people understand, currently the town has a credit card, uh, that we got a few years ago, um, at the recommendation of the auditor, because there were companies where we need to sometimes purchase items that we don't have an account or don't allow accounts, you have to pay upfront. And what we used to do was employees would, you know, I'd make, I'd pay it on my credit card and then the town would reimburse me. The auditors really don't like that, so we bought, we got a credit card for the town through People's Bank. And we just did a really small limit, um, it's capped, it's fifteen hundred per credit card, total capped at forty-five hundred. The library has a credit card as well, any of their expenses obviously are broken out to their department, but, um, what we are finding is that a lot of places are now going to requiring the upfront payment. So most of the police department training, they now have to pay on a credit card. A number of things, uh, with the LCT now have to be done on a credit card. Our website now has, has to be done on a credit card. Some of the marketing stuff that we do, um, in this trial marketing stuff that we're doing requires a credit card. So what we're finding is we're having to, in order to use it for these items that, that we need, um, we're charging, figuring out what we owe, running a check over to the bank to pay it to get the credit limit back down to where we can. And that, that practice is not good practice, um, because we're paying midstream and it, it, it's really not the way we should be doing things. So we talked to People's Bank about what we could do, they said just increase your credit limit, the, the maximum out you can do is the ten thousand five hundred, so that's what we're saying, we would be a maximum of ten thousand five hundred. Again, I, I can't imagine that we would have that many.
What is it now?
Right now it's capped at forty-five. So this caps everybody at ten-five. So my card is forty-five, would be a forty-five hundred dollar limit, Debbie's is a forty-five hundred dollar limit, the library is fifteen hundred, but combined, they can never exceed ten thousand five hundred is what it is. And this is really the only reason, anytime, so that people understand, anytime that we can, uh, set up an account, we set up an account, uh, so that there is that tracking. But so that spending can't go out of control, I mean, anytime something is put on that card, um, you have, you are required to provide Sil with a receipt of what you purchased, she will not pay that credit card bill unless she has a backup. I've, I've had to go on and track down that receipt myself once or twice when I forgot to give it to her. So, uh, there is definitely a checks and balances, it, it, we're in compliance with the auditing standards, they're okay with how we do this, um, but I just wanted people to understand, this isn't just
It's not just to spend more money, it's just to make business a little smoother.
Correct, because a lot of people are now going to credit cards only because they're now not in an office and sending the bill and it's changing, so.
It's happened with me in the water and sewer, you know, we have a, like a switch or something go, and the only place that has it is Graybar and Rutland. You know, so you, you, you need it right then and there, but we didn't have an account, we do, we now have an account set up there, but I mean, it's places where you may have to go to, you got practice that you need and you, you've got to pay, so.
Well, it's, it's a good item to have, it's a good tool to have, and the fact that there's checks and balances on, on
Yes.
our end of it, it's fine. It's just a necessity, instead of running to the bank to pay the limit down so you could actually use the card, because now you can't use it because it's over the limit, so you run down there with a check and it just adds a whole bunch of more.
In the middle of your, your.
And you're, and it's really not.
For why?
It's really not.
It's once a month?
Not in appropriate ways, yeah.
You pay it off, there's no interest on it.
Right, correct, correct, no, our balance is paid each month.
Each month.
And, and again, these are not just, oh, we have a credit card, let's go, we, we try to set up the account first, it's just, there is an increase of businesses requiring credit cards and not doing invoicing.
It's out of necessity.
So. So just as, if you agree, it's a motion to authorize Debbie to sign the, um, business card resolution.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
So what's your, your motion, Lee?
I, uh, make a motion to authorize Debbie Aldrich to sign the business card resolution form for the town of Chester.
I'll second.
So Lee Gustafson's the motion and Lee Dakin's the second, and that's increasing our
The limit from forty-five?
Ten thousand five.
Correct.
Uh, any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All set with it?
Yep.
Uh, next item is just some housekeeping. On Vermont Route one oh-three, the bridge project, we need to sign some temporary right-of-way deed that they're going to reimburse the town to the tune of two hundred and fifty dollars so they could do their work on the town's right-of-way in that area as they work on the bridge. And Julie, you need a motion on this too?
I need a motion to either authorize you or myself, um, to sign the, uh, temporary right-of-way easement deed.
Vermont Agency of Transportation Right-of-Way
Easement deed.
Waiver?
Nope, nope.
No, okay.
It's the, it's the deed that I need the motion.
Grant of temporary rights.
There you go.
So it's a motion to authorize Julie to sign the Vermont Agency of Transportation Grant of Temporary Rights concerning the Route one oh-three bridge project. Someone?
Second it.
Lee Gustafson's the motion and Jeff Holden's the second. This is just paperwork, this is just
That's just all the backup in case you wanted it. It's just a temporary right-of-way, you're not giving permanent property rights.
Yep.
All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Nobody opposed? That's all, you've got the real copies.
I have the original, yep.
All right. And the next item is future agenda items. One thing that, uh, we did talk about earlier when Leslie Thorndson was here is to have a, uh, agenda item, uh, sometime next year regarding where we would like to go as far as the, uh, police oversight, uh, topic is concerned and the new state laws that are coming down or the executive orders, I guess it is, with the, with the governor that has the executive orders, I guess it is, with the, with the governor that has put this out there, and at this time, I think it would help just to at least have a discussion, to get the information, to see where we would like to go or not go, or what we can do or not to.
We haven't got the information, they, they haven't made up their mind yet.
Yeah, that's true.
So, we can't, we're kind of jumping too far ahead.
Well, which is why I'm saying putting it off until we do have that information, and after the budget, it's probably, it probably would be after town meeting also, but...
Um, I was going to go ahead, we had talked earlier, and have a conversation with Jim, I mean, this, this decision needs to go, or, or be discussed and made, based on a lot of advice from our attorney and from the league. There are towns in the state that have done this, and are having a lot of problems, life safety issues for police officers, and there's going to be some issues coming, so the advice given to me from Jim is if we go this route, we need to go carefully, and our homework needs to be done, based on research and facts presented by him, the league, our state representatives. So, if this is a road you want to go down, I, I am happy to go ahead and start gathering the research, there's a lot to it, because a, a select board does not have authority over police procedure, so there's some gray areas here, on what you as a board are allowed to do and not do, and so all those things need to be very well understood before we start this conversation. So, if you want, I can go ahead and start those conversations with Jim, if you want me to just hold off till the budget's done, I can do that, too, but there will be a significant amount of research that needs to be gathered on what really are the facts, and right now the state is very confused itself about what is allowed and what is not allowed, and there's more to be discussed in the session, and, but I can certainly get on track to be following what's going on.
My only comment is, and I've, I think I voiced this to Julie, you have in a committee that's supposed to be civilians overseeing police procedures. Now, if you have a doctor who has a malpractice suit against them, and he has to go in front of a board, he doesn't go in front of a board of civilians, he goes in front of a board of trained medical people that know what the situation is. Same with attorneys, if they've got a question with the bar, they go in front of a board of people that are trained in law and know what should be done. The board, if you're going to have an oversight board, there needs to be law enforcement experience in there, simply because they know what is a proper procedure, and not just a civilian with a mindset that they were wrong, that they need to, you know, have standards, and personally, I can tell you, there's nobody that has a bigger problem with a bad police officer than another police officer is trying to do a good job. So, I just don't think a straight civilian board is going to work.
Well, and, and that's not, that's not what I meant when I said to put this on a future agenda, to make that decision. I, I'm saying it so we can have this discussion that we're kind of having now, whether do we want to even go this way?
Yeah. You know, we, you know... I guess my, my question, sorry to interrupt, Arnie, but my question is, are there resources out there, Julie, that we can access to kind of bring ourselves up to speed as to...
That's what I, that's what I, I need to find out, because there's a lot of stuff out there, and there's a lot of things being conveyed as this is the law, you have to do this, that are not the law, and you have to do this. So, I, I, I need to gather all of that, I would rather have that information gathered from the town's attorney, than just Google this website, Google that website, because it, it's, there's a lot of convoluted stuff that, you know...
And I guess my question is, I'm not necessarily wanting you or somebody else to do a whole bunch of work that doesn't need to be done, but if there was something that could be handed to us to help us, bring us up to speed as to what the issues are, and the pros and cons, I mean, I've heard some stuff in other states of what they're doing and how it's not working.
The league has some stuff out, so I will get my hands on that, that's direct from them, and I can share that with you guys.
Yeah, we need to know exactly what Montpelier is looking for.
Yep, well, and I'm not sure that Montpelier yet knows, but...
In this discussion, it wasn't going to all just jump all of a sudden to have a civilian board.
Correct, right.
That's the farthest thing from my mind right now, I want the information, I want to see what's out there, these executive orders that just came in from the state regarding what you can or can't do, because they're granting the towns, because everything is from the top down in this, in the, in the state, you're not allowed to do anything unless the state says you can, and the, I guess the governor has put out some executive orders, which is mentioned in some of the comments that we've had from citizens, that here's something that you could do, well, I don't know if we want to do it, and, and that's the discussion I want to have, do we want to do it, do we want to do it, what's the information, how does it work, does it not work, and all that, before we even get close to deciding?
Well, let me get a packet of information from the league, and I, I'll, we'll start there.
That'd be very helpful, thank you.
And this is in the future?
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure people that, you know, who are requesting information on this, and want to know that we haven't just dropped it and let it go, we'll, we'll make a decision, we're going to consider it, see what it means to the town of Chester. Sometimes I think that, well, if you don't have a problem, what are you trying to solve?
Right, and Julie, will that...
We do have oversight as it is, with our town manager, with our select board indirectly, even though we really can't get involved with it, because we'd be on a, like, the quasi-judicial thing if something did come before us. So, I mean, there are things in place already, it's not like we don't do anything, so...
Right, no, I agree, I, I think this is a discussion for the future, but I'm wondering if the information you get will be available to the public, so that anybody who's interested in this topic can look at what we're looking at.
Absolutely.
I would think so, yeah.
Yep, yeah, what the league sends me will not be anything confidential, yeah.
Any other future agenda items? Suggestions, concerns, anything? Next item on the agenda?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lee, you want us to, now, thank you, Lee, and good night, Lee.